Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would start out today prior to our beginning the council meeting. We have Joan Ellis, Jen Childress, and Dawn Henness. Are you guys in the audience here? Come on. We have a very special proclamation today regarding American Businesswomen. So, if you guys will step up and kind of tell us what's going on this week, and then we'll read the proclamation. Please.
Good afternoon. The American Businesswomen was established to help provide businesswomen of diverse occupations with personal and professional growth opportunities through networking, professional development, and education. And in 1983, then-President Ronald Reagan signed a declaration along with the Joint Congressional Movement declaring September 22nd, American Businesswomen's Day honoring all women in the workforce. And Mayor has also signed a proclamation for September 22nd, 2012, to honor the day for American Businesswomen.
All right. So, our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the American Businesswomen's Association was founded on September 22nd, 1949, and whereas there are nine ABWA chapters express networks throughout the state of Iowa, and whereas the mission of the ABWA is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, sport, and national recognition. And whereas by a joint congressional resolution, the signature of then-President Ronald Reagan in 1983 enacted September 22nd as American Businesswomen's Day in proclamation of recognizing all working women. And whereas 67% of women in Iowa are in and make up 47.5% of the Iowa workforce, 69.6% of women in Iowa work full-time and 21% are employed part-time. And whereas the Iowa Gender Wage Equity Study reflects results gathered by Iowa Workforce Development using 2011 statewide labor shed survey data. And the results of the survey showed that across all industries, occupations, education, and experience levels, employed females who earned an hourly wage were paid 25% less, or 75 cents on every dollar, than employed males who earned hourly wages. In addition, employed females who earned a salary earned 19.4% less than their male counterparts. And whereas we recognize the importance of women's role in business and strive to improve personal and professional development opportunities, increase access to jobs in fields where women are underrepresented, and increase gender equity in the workforce in compensation for women in our state. And therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2012, is American Businesswomen's Day. And I ask all of our citizens to recognize it and thank all the women that are in our workforce and help us out every single day, and in many cases, lead businesses and industries. So, thank you. Let's give them a great big hand. (APPLAUSE). All right. And Major Wayman.
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Tomorrow marks the 11th anniversary of the terrorist attacks of 9/11 in Pennsylvania, and Washington DC, and New York City. And during those attacks, 3,213 people lost their lives. And that included 343 firefighters, and all totaled hundreds of firefighters, police and port authority officers, members of the military, and civilians from every background, from many different countries. And so, now's the time when we remember them. And we try to do something positive going forward to celebrate all the great things about being patriots in America, and ways to remember service and to provide service. And I'd like to share just an anecdote. Last year, after our 9/11 celebration, a woman who had attended our event came to the mayor because she had been out in New York City. And while she was out in New York City, she picked up a prayer card for firefighter George Kane, who died when the towers fell on September 11th. The mayor came to me and said we should do something appropriate with this, and so, we intend to keep this card with us at our new training logistics facility when we open it. And I wrote a letter to the Tribute Center in New York City saying we have this card and expressed our condolences again. And this week, George Kane's mother, Rosemary, called me. And we spoke for about half an hour on the phone this morning, and she thought it was great that one of the many thousands of cards that she had put together and sent out were being kept and being a way to remember her son and to do things going forward. And she knew all about central Iowa. Her nephew met his wife-to-be on Ragbri. She was from Ames. And she talked at length about the things that the firefighters are doing there in New York City going forward, and she appreciates the things that all the police officers and firefighters in places like Des Moines are doing as well. Since 9/11, the United States Congress and President George W. Bush and President Barack Obama have signed a Patriot and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. And that's why we're here tonight, for the mayor's proclamation to do the same.
Chief? Our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on September 11, 2001, over 3,000 people died in New York City, rural southwest Pennsylvania, and Washington DC in the worst terrorist attack on America in our nation's history. That attack took from us men, women, children, sworn civilian and military service providers, and family, friends, and neighbors. And whereas countless numbers of volunteers from the city of Des Moines, the state of Iowa, and other states, and those from other nations came together to help in the response, mitigation, healing, and rebuilding in the wake of that tragic day. And whereas by joint resolution approved on December 18, 2001, the United States Congress designated September 11 of each year as Patriot Day, and by public law, 11-13 approved April 21st, 2009, designated the observance of September 11 as an annually recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas the National Day of Service and Remembrance is an opportunity to salute the heroes of 9/11, recapture the spirit of unity and compassion that inspired our nation following the attacks, and rededicate ourselves to sustain service to our communities. And whereas the city of Des Moines well reflects the values and traditions of a nation built to ensure through its diversity of people, cultures, business, language, and vital connections between citizens, government, and our environment. And whereas the city of Des Moines continues to remember the sacrifices of all those lost on September 11, 2001, and the enduring sacrifices for families, friends, and comrades lost that day, and holds with honor their memories in our hearts and prayers. And whereas the city of Des Moines leads by example to model how a community stands tall together and moves forward toward a better and stronger future. Our firefighters, police officers, and other first responders stand ready to provide for our safety. Our city staff, citizens, neighborhoods, businesses, and other public and private partners continue to... That pursuit of planning and achieving a more resilient community is progressive, welcoming, respectful, and sustainable for future generations regardless of our challenges. And whereas the city of Des Moines continues to honor the memories of those lost and recognize the service of all the men and women whose mission it is to protect us. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council and all of our citizens of Des Moines, do hereby join in proclaiming September 11, 2012, is Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance, and hope all of you will join in us in celebrating and remembering why we're here and thinking for a brighter future, not only for our citizens, but for our state and for this country. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. (APPLAUSE). All right. We'll take a quick picture of this. Just in... Major? Stand. Yeah. You're going to do this? Actually, I'm going to give you a minute. I was behind it. All right. We have another special presentation, and I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Tekip.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things we do in the fire service going forward is always trying to achieve a level of excellence. I'd like to bring Senior Fire Inspector David Knutson up to stand next to the mayor. Our purpose here today is to celebrate a lot of very hard work on behalf of Senior Inspector Knutson. What we're going to give him today is his National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Certificate. And this is the highest academic achievement one can accomplish from the U.S. Fire Administration's National Fire Academy. It's a four-year program. It's elite in its application, and even more so in the people that actually complete the program. It emphasizes four areas: executive development, special operations, community risk reduction, and executive leadership. It's an intensive program of research and putting together answers to problems that are local and can be applied at the local level. Today in the fire service, there's 1.1 million first responders. In the almost 30-year history of this program, there's only been 3,000 participants or graduates, and several hundred of them are currently still participating in the program. So, that puts David in a very, very small fraction of people in the fire service who've accomplished this feat. I'll read the certificate and then hand to the mayor for presentation. "United States Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and applied research projects, the National Fire Academy under the authority granted by the 111th Congress of the United States of America, and on recommendation of the faculty confers the title of Executive Fire Officer upon David J. Knutson. With all honors, privileges, and responsibilities therant to appertaining, awarded this 25th day of May is when he completed the program, 2012, also from the Federal Emergency Management Agency." This makes David Knutson only the third person from the Des Moines Fire Department to complete this program, and it's a very big deal. We should give him a round of applause.
David, it's a great honor for me as the mayor and for the city council and citizens of the city of Des Moines to present this to you, and congratulations, and thank you so much for being part of our public safety sector, and congratulations. David. That's what you're going to do. That's all. And that's all.
I'd just like to say thank you to the city council and the city of Des Moines for giving me the opportunity to take this class, and our department allowing me the time to go to school. Fire Prevention Bureau, because some of these guys had to pick up the slack while I was gone for two weeks for a consecutive year. So, and my family for also taking care of everything at home while I was away for two weeks. Thank you very much.
Let's get a photo, just three of us, and a little bit of the gentleman here, too. It's called to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for September 10, 2012. Let's clerk take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is the authorization for the city manager to release the mortgage and related security instruments for Rebecca Ticky of 3105 26th Place pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program, Board Communication Number 12-473. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion? It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 3 is authorizing negotiations and approving the conveyance of the city of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to Derek Huffey for the disposition sale of 1533 East Jefferson Avenue and 1325 College Avenue, Board Communication Number 12-474. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? These two residences. Or properties. Seeing none, could we have a motion on this? It's been moved. Any discussion by the board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
It's been moved. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourn. We'll move to the city council meeting here in just a moment. We've had our proclamations and our special presentations. But prior to tonight's beginning, we're going to have a couple of words from our own city council member, Chris Coleman. Those who would like to participate at this moment with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Bishop Dingman was a very important member of our community for the last... over the last half-century. He was the bishop of Des Moines through the 1960s, '70s, and part of the '80s. This is his prayer for all occasions. Thank you, Lord, for a new day. This day has never happened before. It will never happen again. Thank you for this precious gift of time. Give us a sense of urgency to use it wisely and well. This day, then, let us mend a quarrel, build peace, seek out a forgotten friend, dismiss suspicion, and replace it with trust. Write a note of thanks. Share some treasure. Give a soft answer. Encourage youth. Manifest our loyalty in word and deed. Keep a promise. Find the time. Forgo a grudge. Forgive an enemy. Examine our demands on others. Think first of someone else. Appreciate. Be kind. Be gentle. Laugh a little. Laugh a little more. Inspire confidence. Express our gratitude. Offer a prayer. Glad in the heart of another. Admire the beauty of God's world. Stand in awe. Speak with love. Speak it again, and speak it once again. Amen. Thank you.
And we'll call the Des Moines City Council meeting to order and ask clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. The consent agenda tonight is item 3 through 30, and item 3 is approving the consent Item 5, council members, County and Moore vote no. Item 10, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items anybody, either the council or someone from the audience, would like to have pulled for further discussion or clarification? Seeing none, if we could have a motion to enact the balance?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. That takes us to item 10. Item 10 is on public improvements. It's communication from the contractor requesting permission to sublet certain items on a public improvement project. Mr. Moore?
I wish I had caught this this morning or earlier. I didn't. On the way into City Hall this afternoon, I was on Southeast 6th, and I noticed that JT's concrete is already working. In fact, they've almost got sidewalks and drives done. I was just wondering if we could have a report on that, how in the world they're in there working before we've ever approved... You know, I see that they're deleting one subcontractor for another, but I think we're kind of approving this after the fact.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Moore, councilmembers, I'd like to ask Jeb Brewer to come forward. I did have a chance to mention this to our city engineer just a few moments ago, Mr. Moore, when you had mentioned it to me, and I think Jeb has a good answer for us, so...
Mayor members of council, Jeb Brewer, city engineer. Rick just mentioned to me a few minutes ago, I had a concern on this one. Normally, we want to bring these permission to sublets here to council before the work's done. We have not paid for this work that the contractor's done. We have been on the prime contractor, asking him quite strongly to get this work finished up. It's been a long time there in Southeast 6th, so we've been putting quite a bit of pressure on the general contractor to get the work done. In fact, his primary reason for changing subcontractors was that his original subcontractor to sidewalk work wasn't being responsive. So, they have started the work. They haven't finished the work. We have not paid for the work. We wouldn't pay for the work until after council has approved that, but we would indulge that to go ahead and approve this work, even if it's part of it's already been started since we've really been wanting that general contractor to get this work done. And he's doing everything he can to try to get it done before winter sets in.
Thank you. I'll move, Tan.
Seven, yes?
All right. That completes the consent agenda. Moves us to item 31, which is a communication report from Robert Eichelberry of 4151 Hull Avenue to discuss green alleys in the 400 block between East Grand Avenue and East Locust Street. Mr. Eichelberry? If we could have a motion to, I guess, receive...
Mayor, could I speak to this just a little bit? They'd contacted me about this.
Okay.
And I've discussed it with Rick, and I don't think it's totally the issue of a green alley. They've got two alleys there that they'd like to see some improvements in. And I would like to see if we could refer this to the manager to establish a committee of staff and some folks from the HEV over there to see exactly what it is they're looking to have done.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we'd be happy to do that work. It's my understanding in talking to Mr. Moore, and frankly, to others in the area, and Mrs. Hensley mentioned it as well, that there is some interest in making improvements, not only along that alley, but in the parking lot back there. It's an area where there's been a fair amount of business expansion and restaurants and whatnot, so it does seem appropriate, and we'd be happy to work with those folks who have an interest as well as our staff to see what can be done to make some improvements.
If there are individuals that are interested in participating, should they... we just have them contact your office?
Why don't you have them contact my office for right now? We'll get it staffed out soon, but for right now, yeah.
All right. It moved?
Seven, yes?
All right. Not quite time for hearings, so let's move to item 43, which is regarding the proposed city villa from development at Southwest 9th and Murphy Streets by Hubble Realty and to authorize the city manager to negotiate a final agreement for the city financial assistance, Council Communication Number 12-492. Mr. Manager, did you want to make a quick comment on this one?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is... this would be the first major development in the area that we generally refer to as River Point. It's along Southwest 9th. This is a development proposed by the Hubble Company. Our staff has worked hard with the Hubble representatives to bring to you this evening a preliminary agreement. I would hasten to say that in all projects of this complexity, there is a period of time between today, should council approve the preliminary agreement, and when a final agreement is brought back to you. So, there is time for some refinement and questions, if you have any, about what's being done. But I would stress the significance of this, of bringing forward a major residential development in this part of the city that we've worked for quite a period of time to get some development going. It is a tough challenge, I will say, because anytime you start development in an area that hasn't seen much in recent years, it's a challenge. So, I'm very pleased to see this, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Terry Forbert is here and is very familiar with the details of what's on the agenda as well.
Mayor, any questions?
Just a couple of comments. I would agree with the city manager. It's a great project, and I'm excited about it. I know we've been waiting a long time. And I commend Hubble for moving forward and making this happen. Obviously, there's quite a lot of detail in here that we, from a city perspective, need to make sure that we understand and work through. Two items, I just want to make sure that as we move forward, one would be Hubble Realty projects that they've had in the past have not been taxable at commercial rate. They've been co-opted or condoed, and I'd just like to know how they propose this project going forward. And I believe that that's something that is of significance to us as a city. We've had a lot of debate on it here at the council table. And secondly, it's my understanding that the intent is that these would be market-rate dwellings, and I want to make sure that that's concrete in the final contract that is put together with Hubble.
Mrs. Hensley, councilmembers, it's my understanding that the proposal before us up until recently was market-rate housing. There was some discussion late on Friday about the possibility of adding some flexibility into that. Our message back to... about the possibility of adding some flexibility into that. Our message back to Hubble, as recently as today, has been that our preference is for market-rate housing, and so the reaction I had to that was positive, but clearly, it's a detail, really more than a detail, that we'll have to clarify for you and nail down as we bring back the final development plan. The message we've given to Hubble and council could reinforce or not this particular point is that these, these housing units should be market-rate. As to your first point, I'd like a chance to talk that over with, with the Hubble folks and our staff in terms of the status of the units as either commercial or residential in their assessment. That has a major impact, but it's also an issue that has been quite prevalent in the development of housing in our community, so we need to be sensitive to that point as well.
I guess just to follow up on that, then, two, two comments would be, I'm not opposed to tax credit projects, obviously. However, because of the size of this project and the, it being the first in an area that we've invested tens of millions of dollars in, I think the message needs to start out with market rate. I just think that would be a much, you know, down the road, if we look at it, and, and we've got a good blend. In fact, I believe the original proposal had a mix of, of both. And secondly, as you look at all of the other different pieces of the economic development incentives that have been provided to Hubble over the years, we're making some concessions on those. And I, I just want to make sure that we have a clear financial picture of the full package, and I know this is the very first step. As we go forward, I support the project, but I just want to make sure that we have a price tag attached to all of the different pieces of this project.
Mrs. Hensley, I certainly understand your point, and it's one that we're very sensitive to in terms of what the city's financial involvement is. This is a project that has a good deal of history, so there is, there's been some incentives that the city's provided in the past. We were very mindful of those and wanted to ensure that any agreement we brought forward was respectful of those deals that have been hatched in the past, and that whatever payments were due, the city were in fact provided. So, we've tried to be very attentive to that. Next time we bring this back to you, we will provide a very full and complete explanation of what the incentives are, so you have a clear picture of that before you take any definitive action on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
I think Councilwoman Hensley got to most of my points. Just a quick summary. I am very excited about this project. I think with the housing bubble and the lack of new development that we've heard talked about in the media all around the country, we should take pride that a strong, strong local developer is willing to put their money on Des Moines' future, and that, that feels very good. I, I do think we should be really thoughtful about the use of tax credits here, and I think Christine had it right, that that might involve a conversation and an agreement about future phases of this as well, because I think we want to make sure that, you know, this is started in the best possible situation for it to succeed long-term and continue to grow. So, my personal feelings is that it probably isn't the best situation to start with a tax credit project. So, I think Christine and I completely agree, so.
I'll move item 43.
Seven yes?
Okay, we have two extra items. The first is supporting Drake University application to the United States EDA Economic Development Administration for a technical assistance grant to conduct a feasibility study for hosting the 2016 U.S. Track and Field Olympic Trials. Council sponsor on this was Councilmember Grease, and you want to make a, a comment, Howie?
I, I absolutely can. I think this one's pretty self-explanatory, but it's a partnership with Drake and the Convention and Visitors Bureau to have a feasibility study done to see what, if anything, needs to be done to apply for the 2016 Olympic Trials. This is obviously fantastic for our area if we can get this. Drake's portion, they're trying to get a grant from the EDA, and they just needed a local letter of support. So, I will move extra item one.
Okay. Brian, any comment?
That's the Drake grad coming out, doing a great job over there.
Yeah.
It's a very opportunity for our city to bring that here.
Absolutely.
It is fantastic, and.
Brian, we want it to happen. We want you to make sure you have photos that memorialize all these different events that happened in and around you. Bring them down, present them. All right. Item two is authorizing the mayor to sign a letter requesting changes to Iowa Finance Authority 2013 Qualified Allocation Plan for the 2013 Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Round, and I sponsored it, but Mr. Manager, why don't you quickly hit the high points on our ask?
Mr. Mayor, council members, there are two issues that you have addressed in the past about these tax credits from the state of Iowa. One is the issue of the cap, which is the, in effect, the amount of funds, IFA funds that can be spent per unit in a project. We found that to be quite inhibiting for projects in our city, so it is a request for IFA to consider raising that cap for projects here and presumably elsewhere. And the other is reasserting the council's desire to play a role in the review of these projects as they go forward. This is similar to the point that you made last year, and I will say that with the help of a lot of people around this table, IFA does seem to be listening to some of our comments, and we've made some headway in some recent projects, so we're appreciative of that. We're giving this another shot with another letter.
Any questions? Anybody? Audience?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this letter going forward, and I, a couple of comments. I know that we have a couple of projects right now that have struggled because of the cap, the Crane Building, to be, and I've not talked with them since they were before the council, but, you know, how, is there any way that there can be some attention if that's problematic, because if they're not successful in meeting the caps, they could lose their, that's a real problem for their investors. So, I guess I'd just like to know if there's been any discussion along those lines. And secondly, from what I understand, all of the projects, tax credit projects will be coming back to the city and will be giving approval on all the, so we're asking for a difference in the?
No, I think we're, I think we're asking for that role. I think we had that role in the past.
And it was taken away.
And it was taken away, and we're, we're asking that IFA reinstate your ability to provide some comment on these projects as they go forward. And on the, on the cap issue, I simply don't know, sitting here, whether we can make that kind of a change, retroactive on a project like the Crane Building that's gone forward, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
And I don't know that they're asking or need it, but I know that was a real concern when they were before the council, so I just guess I'd like to have some.
We, we'll certainly look into it, and if there's any way to provide a benefit, I understand exactly what you're saying and why the need for it. So, if we can, we will.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll move extra item two.
Seven yes?
All right, if, we have about five minutes. If we could have a motion to recess the city council and reconvene as board of health?
Mr. Eichelberry's now in attendance. Maybe he'd like to speak.
Okay.
I'll do a, if possible, do a motion to reconsider item 31 and see if Mr. Eichelberry wants to speak. Does that make sense? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are now reconsidering item 31. Mr. Moore, why don't you quickly let Mr. Eichelberry know what we have done up to this moment?
Bob, what we did is voted to Senate back, refer this issue to the city manager's office for him to establish a committee of staff, members of the HEV, and anybody else concerned over there, to have a meeting to see exactly what the needs are and what we can do with the two alleys.
Excellent. I did read this report that I got back. The, pardon me, the alleys nominated are used as green alleys are currently sound, serviceable condition, adequate drainage. No, they're not. Well, we have a foot of standing water through there, and in the winter, it turns to solid ice. They're not draining. I personally paid for 60 feet of the alley to be resurfaced. So, we got a problem. And in conjunction, we've got open dumpsters, trash. It's a mess. Patrick came with me. He's got a video present for pictures that he'd like to pass to council.
If you'd start them over here.
I went this way.
Mr. Coleman, do you want to, can we keep these or not?
Yeah, you can.
All right.
I'll move to receive and file them.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I hope the council finds these most enlightening after we've had fires and dumpsters and trash and numerous city reports, and now winter's upon us. You know, I know you can't make a magic fix, but I'd like to see a little bit of money spent east of the river. What you're doing west is wonderful. I love this city to death, but I want to see a little come our way to help these village improve, become more sustainable and more vibrant. So, if you take those into consideration, thank you very much.
All right, and maybe, Mr. Coleman, if you'd make part of your, a motion to refer those to the manager for his consideration when reviewing the issue.
Done.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
You bet. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Oh, did you want to give it? Go ahead. You wrote it up.
We have no speaker. Brett?
My name's Patrick Boltinghouse. I own a business at the end of this alley. It is with great hopes that being here today will improve the image of the East Village, Des Moines, and Iowa, as being leaders in the green movement that has been proving to be inevitable worldwide. Iowa already leads the country in wind energy and is discussing making a solar tax credit available. Our encouragement to become a healthier state with environmentally friendly bike trails shows our physical can-do passion, not to mention, Des Moines last year was ranked as having, I believe it was, the seventh best drinking water in the nation. With these feats and social environmentally success, or successes under our belt, I would like to reintroduce the idea of green alleys for your voting consideration. With your permission, pictures, you got them. These are the alleys between the streets. You all know where they are. These alleyways have not only been a nuisance for their lack of zone enforcement for property owners as seen here, but due to the high traffic of delivery trucks and semi freights have constantly, or have consistently needed repair. In the winter months, potholes that collect ice have made it impossible for delivery trucks to travel down them. I personally have watched more than one truck needing to be towed out of the truck, or out of the alley after getting stuck. The lack of rainwater drain off, this year alone, has killed off two city trees in the city lot, which were both about five years established. The lack of attention to the image has, has made these alleyways a breeding ground for dumpster fires, parking violations, graffiti, burglaries, and other mischief, which incidentally, a lot have happened in the past three months. The presence of the green alleys may remedy such are many of these issues just by adding an image of beautification. Sadly, the lack of respect leading to the mass amounts of trash blowing around the East Village is in part due to select property owners who seem to act immune to city code when it comes to the way they maintain their dumpsters as shown in these pictures. If the city implemented green alleys, it could correct the property owner's image of the, of their dumpsters. It's, I pretty much put it out there, it's like when grandma pulls out her good china for dinner. You may not like your vegetables, but you're going to eat them out of respect, and you're going to have a beautiful neighborhood for it. On a note to the historic restoration of the East Village and sustainability of the environment, green alleys are often finished with a bricklay underneath the pavement. You can actually see that brick is still here in the alley. This bricklay actually helps to, to keep the water in our water table, which is good for the trees. It actually, just recently, a study that came out of Atlanta this last summer for heat showed that in their versions of green alleys, the temperature was an average of about 3.2 degrees cooler, so it's something that can actually help our environment just that way alone. Not to mention that the brick erodes less in-between fixes and is easier to fix than the pavement. It's my hope that you guys will consider this. Thank you.
Patrick, thank you.
Love it. Move to receiving file this as well, the comments.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council.
You bet. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Laura? All right, it now is 5:03. Let's open our hearings. Item 32, which is on proposed ordinances establishing a uniform administrative hearing process and applying that process to the consideration of appeals and certain decisions made by city officers in the performance of their official duties. Council Communication number 12-496. A is amending Chapter 3 of the municipal code, establishing an administrative hearing process for appeals. B is amending Chapter 18 of the municipal code regarding process and appeals for the designation and handling of vicious dogs and illegal and dangerous animals. C is amending Section 42, 267 of the municipal code regarding appeals from decisions made in the enforcement of noise control ordinance. D is amending Section 78-70.01 and 78-73 of the municipal code regarding denial and revocation of the transient merchant licenses. E is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding appeals for impounded vehicles. E, amending Chapter 126 of the municipal code regarding issuance, revocation, and appeals of taxicab and limousine drivers' licenses. All right, anyone in the audience to discuss any of these items and the proposed ordinances regarding the hearings? Seeing none, any comments by council members?
I'd be happy to go ahead and move this. I believe that we did have discussion at, when we were setting the date of the hearing, that we would have a reporting mechanism, and I think that's important, that we do have that based upon this change, so that we have the opportunity to reevaluate it and determine if it's working or not.
Yes.
Mayor, council members, yeah, as a matter of fact, your comments at the last meeting were to the effect, just as you said, Mrs. Hensley, that there was the need to have a reporting process, so you could see how this new process is working. The blue letter makes reference to quarterly reports that would be submitted to you and the effectiveness of, of this new procedure. In conversation today, it's been suggested, in addition to that, that as there are significant decisions made, for example, if district court would overturn a decision in terms of a dangerous animal, for example, that, that we ought not to wait till the next quarter to actually get that report out. That was a suggestion from Mr. Coleman, so, so we would be happy to do that, and I applaud your sensitivity to the issue of wanting to monitor the effectiveness of this ordinance. It makes a lot of sense to do that. It is a new procedure, a departure from how you've done business in the past, and frankly, my view would be that if, if you monitor this process over a period of time, and it doesn't work for you, and you don't feel like the public's getting the proper process out of it, that you could reevaluate your decision should you decide to go forward. But with that proviso in place, it does make sense to me, and I think to our staff, that we implement this procedure, at least give it a shot to see how it works. I, I think it will be a positive change in terms of the processes, but if not, the monitoring procedures that are being put in place in conjunction with this will give you a good way to monitor the overall effectiveness of this ordinance, or these ordinances, I should say.
Anybody else? Meyer?
Just briefly want to comment about what exactly this does. This is, this is not unusual to take this route at the state level. It's law that I've practiced in the past. Agencies make. Uh, agencies make decisions and those decisions get appealed directly to district court. Uh, this is not, I just want to make clear that this is not some kind of outlier, uh, abnormal thing. This is how it's done at the state under the Administrative Procedures Act 17A. And it's my understanding that, um, this is more of a question for maybe the legal counsel that... I have a question for legal counsel, that in order to, uh, if, if we were to, if somebody were to appeal to district court, that, my understanding is, the district court's, the judge's decision would have to be based on, uh, to overturn what an administrative hearing officer does, it'd have to be outside the scope of what the law says, or some kind of abuse of discretion.
That, that's correct.
Okay, so, um, and that really is our charge as well when we hear these things. So it's, again, it's not, from a procedural standpoint, from a legal standpoint, it's not something that, outside the ordinary, so I just want to make that clear.
Brian, I'd almost take it a step further. If there's been one criticism that I've heard, uh, over the time I've served on the council, it is the independence of the, uh, hearing officer and then it's appealed within the same structure. I, I think there's greater, um, uh, comfort for those going through this process, uh, to know that it can be outside, you know, the appeal can be held outside of the confines of the same hierarchy. And I, I think for that reason, it's, uh, uh, not just a, uh, you know, not just a even trade-off for the residents of Des Moines, but it's a, it's a, it's a benefit for them in that way.
It allows them to go to a, a neutral party.
Right.
To be, but our, I've always said this, and we've been working on this for five years, I've said that we are, as a council, terrible judges and terrible juries because we want to help people, we want to make sure that we do right. Uh, but at the same time, we are not always, um, uh, we are mostly swayed by emotion and things like that because we want to try and help people. This is a way for a decision that was fairly made by an administrative hearing officer to be appealed to a, uh, to a neutral party, so I'm glad we're...
I compliment you, Brian, because I think you brought this forward after your professional experience and understanding the state law. I, I want to just, I want to make sure that, um, the point that Rick made, that I made to him earlier, is there. I, I don't want to wait for a quarterly report to notify the council, the ward council person. Let's say that an administrative hearing officer and our police department has, um, determined that a dog is dangerous, you know, the worst of our, of our categories, and should be euthanized. If that's overturned and the dog sent back to the neighborhood, there, there ought to be some communication, uh, available, uh, to those residents who may have seen it through to the hearing officer, but may not be aware or able to attend a court hearing or something like that. And I would certainly like us to think through how that communication to us and to maybe, uh, offended people before, you know, the people that we were investigating on behalf of our police department was, how that communication might happen. Does that make sense? I don't know, I don't know how that is. I'm not, I'm, I'm not interested in designing it tonight, or me designing it, but if our legal team and the clerk and the, uh, manager understand that concern, I would just hate to not tie that loop together if a dangerous dog, in the opinion of our police department, is sent back to a neighborhood without any notice.
Anybody else?
I, for one, am comfortable in voting on all three readings. We've talked about this, as Brian said, for five years and it's been on our workshop. I don't know if we have the votes or who's supporting it.
I don't think we need three readings, do we?
I don't know if you do or not. I will tell you that I respectfully disagree. And I think that, uh, when I took this office, I understood what my responsibilities were and what citizens thought, and this is a low-cost place for them to, to have a redress of whatever grievance that they have or disagreement that they have with the administrative hearing officer. It, uh, costs them nothing to come in here and do it. They go to district court. It does cost them to file. It does cost them often to hire an attorney to go in there and office, often a very long process to get something decided in, in a district court setting. Uh, on the rarest of occasions, when we've overturned a, a decision, I think we did it for the right reasons and we did it, uh, painfully sometimes, as Brian has pointed out. Although I, as I've been in the courtroom from time to time, I know that an awful lot of those jurors don't come in as professional jurors either. Uh, we are elected and represent people and often are asked to listen, whether it's, uh, to issues of complaint about city, other city process. I think that, uh, this is a reasonable thing to, to look at, so in, uh, um, reading this and passing this, I would, uh, certainly vote a, I'm going to vote no on B, C, E and F. All right. Who has the motion?
Is it, is the motion to waive the three readings then?
Yes, let's go ahead and, uh, make the motion to, um, move 32A through F and the non-published, uh, second and third readings if we have the votes.
We have seven yes on A and D, and six yes and one no on B, C, E and F.
So, motion passes.
So, motion passes. All right. Takes us to item 33 on amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the allowed location and manner of operation of businesses engaged in the sale of liquor, wine and beer. Council Communication number 12-487. A is a second consideration of the ordinance as passed, uh, at the August 27th city council meeting. Uh, one after that is a final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the community development director and requires six votes. Or B, an alternative resolution, second consideration of the ordinance with the amendments that increase the limited establishments to 12,000 square feet and delete the conditional use permit requirement for general establishments. One is a final consideration of the ordinance above, and again, the waiver is requested by the community development director and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to discuss item 33 on the amendments to the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Chris Pose. I'm an attorney. Office address, 317 Sixth Avenue, uh, in Des Moines. Represent Iowa CBS Pharmacy and we support, uh, item 33B, the alternate resolution, along with, uh, item B1. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Pose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? All right. Seeing none.
A comment, I think this is a, uh, a, a great amendment to help out those who are the 12,000 square feet and that, rather than go with the 10,000. And so, uh, if the hearings closed, I'll move, uh, uh, 33B and B1.
It's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right. Item passes. Item B, the alternate resolution. Item 34 on the appeal by Conlon Properties from the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the property at 826 18th Street. Council Communication number 12-489. A is affirming the decision, or B, an alternate resolution reversing in part the decision. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Item 34. Property at 826 18th Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt McKenney. I'm here on behalf of Conlon Properties. I'm an attorney. My address is 666 Grand Avenue, Suite 2000, uh, here in Des Moines. I know the council has heard on this particular issue a number of times. We were here initially on an appeal from the Historic Preservation Commission, I think back in May. Then, uh, we had a, uh, we had an opportunity to have a workshop where we discussed some of these issues. And so, rather than kind of marching through everything we've covered in the past, I would just kind of refer to those things and ask that they be a part of the record, that the appeal, the run and run we've had, different arguments and presentations that have been made. And just streamline a couple of the issues. Uh, number one, um, I'd like to just put an end to any myth that may be out there that vinyl is not allowed in historic districts. We've got the Des Moines ordinance that you can look to, and nothing in the Des Moines ordinance says that vinyl is prohibited.
Excuse me, can, can I just, one question for you?
Yes.
Because, um, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page here. I spoke with Mr. Conlon earlier today and I was under the impression that, um, because we weren't aware that it was going to be on the council agenda tonight, um, that we were going to make a motion to continue that. So is that your intent still?
Well...
Or do you want to have action taken tonight?
If, if the council's willing to continue the hearing, uh, to a, to the, I'm sorry, continue this matter to the next hearing, uh, that would be acceptable to Conlon Properties. So I, I, I mean, what I don't want to do is not have the opportunity to address, uh, the council and then...
Well, I guess I just want to be fair to everybody involved here, and I, I think that if we're going to continue it, probably it would be best not to go, go through a lot of the information. Um, it's my understanding that the, um, in talking with Mr. Conlon, that there are two things that we want to make sure that we have and that we would be able to get in the next two weeks. And I believe strongly that we have to make a decision and we cannot continue it after the next two weeks because I think we're probably setting a record right now for continuations. Um, but I, I think, just in being fair also to the individuals that have come down to the council meetings a number of times, that they need to know that there will be action taken one way or the other.
Fair enough.
So is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So the two items, just to make sure that we're on the same page, would be that, and I've talked with city staff on this item, that we look at the taxable value of the properties in Sherman Hill as they were 10 years ago compared to today. Reason being, in my discussion with Mr. Conlon, that we feel that there's, I feel that there's been significant, um, increase in value and it's as a direct result of the historic preservation requirements for those properties. And number two, Mr. Porter, when we did the workshop, um, indicated that he would be able to get information to you and Mr. Conlon regarding, uh, vinyl windows and their uses, um, in other parts of the country. I believe I've got that right.
Okay. Um, I, I would, I would just ask that, when scheduling the hearing on this particular issue, if we're going to have some sort of, uh, documentation on taxable value, if we could get that in advance of the hearing, would, as opposed to like, you know, the Friday before, a Monday hearing or something like that?
Okay.
And I don't know how long it'd take to get that sort of documentation generated.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we, typically, information for council agendas goes out on Thursday or Friday, uh, if you'd like something sooner from that, and that's the councils, we'll, we'll do our best to get it out earlier in the week if we can.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And just a quick thing. I, I did hear that, um, I think since we were last here, on top of brown and white and black colored, there is the availability now, or maybe there always has been, of, um, uh, wood textured, uh, grain, with a grain in it?
That is correct. There is a, uh, there is an option, um, where the proposed vinyl could have the, uh, wood grain.
Can you, can you see to it that the council gets some kind of, uh, product description or photo or, or, uh, or bring a sample of it with you next time?
Would you like it prior to the hearing or at that hearing?
If we could get the literature ahead of time, that would be great. I don't need a sample before then.
Fair enough. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll find it. Thank you.
Martha Green. 815 18th Street. I'm just going to point out to Mr. Coleman, the issue is not necessarily the materiality, it is the proportion, uh, that needs to match the historic proportions and vinyl does not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So my motion then is to continue the hearing to September 24th with the understanding that we'll get the information to all of the parties, council and Mr. Conlon, from, um, Mr. Porter's discussion, so Martha, if you could take that back to, uh, Jack, that would be great. Thank you. Um, and that we will make a final decision on the 24th, so we should have it concluded one way or the other.
Seven yes.
Item 35 on the conveyance by installment contract of city-owned real estate adjoining South West First Street and Dunham Avenue and Indianola Avenue to St. Anthony Church of Des Moines for $20,000. Council Communication number 12-478. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none. Could we have a motion?
I'll move 35.
Seven yes.
Item 36 on the vacation in the north-south alley right of Way, lying south of Raccoon Street, between Southeast 18th and 19th Street. A, first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the engineering department and requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on the vacation of that north-south alley between Southeast 18th and Southeast 19th Street?
I'll move, uh, 36A and B.
Seven yes.
Item 37 on the sale of excess city-owned property northeast of Northeast Adia Street and northeast 126th Avenue to Polk County for $208,200. Council Communication number 12-479. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none. Could we have a motion?
Six yes.
Item 38 on the request from Davis Investment Company, Inc., to rezone property at 1658 East Euclid Avenue from N1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial to allow the owner to request a conditional use permit for the property to be used for an outdoor wooden pallet material recycling operation that is ancillary to the new pallet manufacturing. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of that ordinance and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
I've got a comment. Um, I, I noticed that the same piece of property is on the September 26th agenda for the zoning board of adjustment, and I was just wondering what effect our actions tonight will have on that in front of the ZBOA.
Uh, Mr. Manager, or I guess Mike Budwork?
Mayor, County and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the city of Des Moines. Uh, the, uh, action tonight, if the zoning is finalized and you waive the readings, the item could proceed to the September 26th, um, board of adjustment meeting. Otherwise, your next reading wouldn't be for two weeks, and, uh, we'd intended to allow it to continue to be on that agenda, but the preference would be to waive the readings this evening so that we can send notices out.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion on, uh, 38, uh, A and B. This building's been sitting there empty for some time, and it'd be nice to have something in there. Looks like, to me, it's mostly all going to be inside. There's just a little bit outside area that there won't be a lot of, uh, pallets sitting
Six yes.
39 on the Eastern Lake Bridge over the Eastern Lake rehabilitation, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate and receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Herbinger Construction, Inc., Dean Herbinger, president, $532,899.39. Council Communication number 12-483. A is a... A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item?
I'll move 39, 39A.
Seven yes.
40, East Park Avenue sidewalk from southeast 14th Street to southeast 18th Street Court. Resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate and receive and file the bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Joyner Construction, Inc., Company, Inc., Zeb Joyner, Vice President, $98,159.60. Council Communication number 12-484. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody in the audience to speak on this?
Move 40.
Seeing none, it's been moved.
48.
And A, also?
Item 41 on the Public Works Salt Storage Facility. The resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file the bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Joyner Construction Company, Inc., Zeb Joyner, Vice President, $455,899.40. Council Communication number 12-482. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Item 41. Anyone to speak to that? Seeing none.
I'll move 41. My understanding is this building is so that we can be removed and relocated at some point in time if we decide to put it in a new area.
Correct.
Item 42, municipal service center preliminary site grading. The resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and to receive and file the bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Corel Contractor, Inc., Grant S. Corel, President, $1183,474.50. Council Communication number 12-481 is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. And again, Mr. Manager, I hope that you and the engineering department are making sure that we're keeping this way above floodplain.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the mayor, very appropriately, has brought up the issue of flood potential, and as a result of that, we have challenged the design team to look at this issue very thoroughly, and I think they have done a good job. And I'll try to give you some of the high points, just for the record, but I see our staff is there and Jeb, and if you have details beyond this, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up and talk to you. But four points are important about it, in terms of the flood protection for this particular site. With the levee and pump station system in place and operational that we have there, this particular site is protected above the 200-year flood event for the Des Moines River without freeboard, and that's using the most recent flood frequency data from the Corps of Engineers. Second thing to say about the levee system is that it has been recently inspected and approved by the Corps of Engineers. That sounds like maybe a minor thing, but it's actually very significant that the Corps has reviewed that levee down there and has signed off that it's in good working order today. Two other things about the design of the facility that struck me as particularly important in the design of it, and that is that the first floor of the building is above the 100-year floodplain level. That's important in the event that all of the levees fail or there's breach, the first floor of the building is above 100-year floor, and the mechanical systems are placed above the 500-year flood frequency. The term of art there is flood hardening, so we have found some ways to harden the site, if you will, against flooding activities in this particular area. There is other features to this, but suffice it to say, I think the staff has been as diligent as possible at looking for ways to ensure that the site is properly protected. Of course, it's impossible to protect against every eventual outty, but it seems to me that the actions taken and the design proposed here are ones that will reasonably offer protection to the site. Two other things about this particular action are important to note. One is that with all of the actions that you've had on this particular project, this is the first major construction activity. This is the grading contract, and it's very significant. We've done right-of-way acquisition, as you all know, but this is really the first piece in terms of the actual construction of the facility, and it's significant for that. And the last thing I want to say is that the bids came in extraordinarily good. The bid estimate, the bid award that's on the agenda this evening is about a million dollars less than what the estimate was, so we're obviously very pleased with that. But Mayor and council, your comments, in particular, Mayor, about the flood issues here are entirely warranted and appropriate. We have done our very best to address those in the best way we know how, and we'll continue to do that through the design process as it goes forward.
We did have some discussion earlier about the percentage of the bid versus what our staff had estimated it was going to cost, about 50% of what the estimate was. Hopefully, there's no add-ons that come through as a result of some of these bids.
Hopefully, that is true.
Right, anybody in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Moved.
Seven yes.
All right, if I'm not mistaken, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene as Board of Health. Home favorites say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as Board of Health. Item on the agenda this evening is legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at 1406 43rd Street, its garage structure. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Item 1 has been moved, any discussion? Home favorites say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Home favorites say aye?
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening.
Thank you for having us.